Peter, roll call of attendance.
Yes.
Do you have motion to include the agenda?
I agree.
All of their staff.
Hi.
We have some discussion I just had beginning of the morning between our superintendents. Are you going to introduce them?
Yeah, I mean, I'm here in the board. It's kind of a strange thing that there's a kind of, people are really nice, it's almost understandable, but there's a pompful excitement involved in this superintendent. People will say something and then they'll say something, and we're really excited about this. And in fact, I'm feeling it to an extent too. Yesterday Stacy and I were at the Ties Conference and then the MSA meeting afterwards, and I made some contacts there. But one candidate may have a home database, and then two other will be set up, and then some other superintendents are going to be making recommendations. So I think it's a really exciting time, and there's a lot of interest, so it's, I'm excited about it. I think that, I think Ruben's going to be a great person. I believe in front of you, you have a document that summarizes the three things, and Cole Flusner is here, he can speak to some of the things specifically, and I think he should prepare some work on this as well. Okay. So, the whole investigation.
Because I'll be starting, and then we'll end with this, please. So, Anka last board meeting, subcommittee of us were, for a quick gather to talk about superintendent search, and Paige and Nicole and Lynn, because we've met twice, and shared some information, and Nicole has been very helpful in that conversation. Before Peter, remember about this subcommittee, is we were just gathering information, we have some power to bring to you tonight to talk about. There are two documents we had, we asked the administration to set up on the website, to the information about the search process, so on the website now, I think, I think there are some links, and so it's very transparent to the community what we're doing. There are some documents from our subcommittee meetings, and we'll continue putting documents and information there. So what's coming around the table now is a summary of things we want to bring forward from our two, two hour discussions, four hours of talking, the five of us, that the board needs to think about and consider. So Kevin, Julie and I have been working on this, and we're going to sort of share the presentation. Go ahead and start. At the top, who we were asking questions, what are the given? What do we, what do we know? We know from statute that we must employ a superintendent. So there's no question, should we or should we not search? Yes, we have to search. So that's off the table. We know it's very important in our community to involve them in the process, and so we've got to define what that means, how they'll be involved, when they'll be involved. We know staff is very important to involve as well. We know that all meetings and discussions must be open to the public and posted. So the committee and staff will be very clear on what we're going to need to talk about these things, the subcommittee if it continues, and the full board. Candidate names cannot be disclosed until candidates, candidates are finalists. So anytime we're in a meeting, whether it be a subcommittee or board meeting, we will be needing to refer to anyone by candidate A, B, 1, 2, however we type the label, and we cannot disclose names until we get to the finalist position. So please keep that in mind as we move forward. We feel it's important to recruit beyond Amida, beyond Minnesota, to really look at the upper Midwest region. And the replacement superintendent will have a lot of involvement with budget work and committee outreach as we move forward. So those are sort of the given, through working with us, we were having our discussion. And so I think, Kevin, is he going to talk more about the concept of research firms?
So, like in many things in life, there's pros and there's some cons. And so we looked at, you know, we've got a fairly narrow timeline, and we want to do, we do definitely want to make sure that we're casting a fairly wide net in the upper Midwest. And so, you know, do we do something internally? Do, are we able to do that in this time period? This subcommittee, it's probably beyond our scope to do that. Then we, like, kind of the middle tier is the MSBA, and they've been doing searches for the last five years, and concentrate on that 332 districts in Minnesota, in Minnesota piece. And then the idea of using one of many search firms, which are usually comprised of former superintendents. Mark, I don't know if you've got that, but, yes, I mean, those superintendents obviously have some expertise in what it takes to be a superintendent, so a lot of times they're relatively, you know. So you can read here the different, the pros and the cons, the cost, you know, if we did use a search firm, the cost would be a lot less, if we used MSBA, it'd be a little price. And then if we used the search firm, the full-blown search firm, it would be a slightly higher cost. So I think the pros of using a search firm really outweigh the cons, which again is the cost and the time to select a company. The board, I think, very quickly after looking at this, zeroed in on the recommendation of using a search firm, and that we put it out to
The subcommittee.
Subcommittee, excuse me. Subcommittee put this out to a, would recommend to the full board that we use a search firm, and we have three, one's MSBA, we talked about Springsteen, and this executive one, a for access, so. That is kind of, and it didn't, I mean, there wasn't any, in the subcommittee, there wasn't, and how, I don't know, we just pretty much unanimously decided that that was the recommendation we made from the board.
Do you want to talk about each of these, or are we done with our recommendations in the chair, or do you want to do the whole? Let's do the package.
Okay, so my, my role was to explain the different options we could have for superintendent, and again, if you have a secondary school, you have to employ a superintendent. But you can have a full-time superintendent, you can have a superintendent part-time, you can have a superintendent principal, you could have many different options within the superintendent principal combination. And the superintendent principal combination comes into all kinds, comes with all kinds of considerations that if you decided to do that, it's very likely you would, you would run into issues of where the principal's attention would default to, very likely being the principal instead of the superintendent, and that is, that could be a big negative if we decided to do something like that. I think, I think that as a subcommittee, we decided that we would go for a full-time superintendent, but I just wanted to put those options out there, and if anyone has more questions, I have a very in-depth handout from a session that I just attended on, on the options that we have, and I'm sure that this handout is also available via the app on your phone if you, from the leadership conference.
Do you want to go ahead to searching for a full-time superintendent?
Well, why don't you do that?
So we did question with the timing of the search, when it makes sense, are we too late to the field to do a search, to have a good candidate pool, or should we be looking at an interim situation for a year to look at all the options and do a full search with a longer timeline next year? So we were concerned about that, but in our discussions at MSBA, luckily the conference timing worked out well, and in talking to other districts and superintendents that they felt were in fine shape in terms of our timeline, and that we should go ahead and do a full search and not consider an interim model. And so, in your hand on page two, there's your recommendation to search for a full-time superintendent. On page three is your recommendation Julie just talked about, in terms of full-time position and not look at a shared position, part-time position, shift type of thing. In addition, the group talked about, well, what's next? At the board, we meet every two weeks, this would really eat our time away, and so we also can, we also have a recommendation that we should continue some sort of task force to continue to look at district level and building level administrative structures, what was proposed by the group there, because as we talked about the different models, and Julie was talking about, we just started to wonder, you know, with the possibility of levy, with our budget scenario, are, have we truly dived into our administrative structures in the district recently? This would be an opportunity to put all that together as we think about openings. So then, under next steps, we have some recommendations that don't have to be really thorough tonight as much, but looking to model contracts as a starting point for our language, through the discussions when it gets to that point with the new hire. In that packet, which I brought to you at the table from the MSBA conference, there's a transition forms, which I have, which I shared with Dr. Larson. And then additionally, have HR work with the tech team to create a meeting from the district page, that's taken care of already. And then to continue with some sort of subcommittee to support staff for the search process, maybe meeting almost weekly to check in on different pieces and parts. It's like a sentence, we never got cut off, part of the sentence out of the line. So those are the recommendations we have from our four hours of conversation.
All right, everyone.
And so, I talked to, at the MSBA conference, talked to a leadership event at MSA, so the, what's the acronym?
Association.
Association of Superintendent Managers. So, talked to the leadership there, and they thought that we would have absolutely no difficulty whatsoever attracting some really good candidates to this district.
Two recommendations about which of these companies we would need to, I would assume they'll have to each night at another meeting.
Right. We need to move very quickly. Unfortunately, with the time when we've already been given, staff went out very quickly to the three companies we were interested in, but those did not come back until today. I have not opened them to read.
I'll read them.
So, right, so this, this really great summary, I looked at, highlighted the cost on, and that's all I've looked at, because that is a concern, but I haven't looked at, I don't think anyone has, the information just came in this afternoon, and so, you know, in terms of the timeline, what it makes sense for the board to ask if the subcommittee continues to select to make that choice and bring that back to the board, or just make that choice? You know, weighing those different options. But we do have two pieces there, we've got the timeline, and we've got one beneath that. So, I don't have a recommendation, I haven't.
Kevin, do you have? Do other board members have some feelings about whether or not we should just let that subcommittee just choose one of these groups, or bring back those that we need or not?
I think the cost is a factor.
I agree.
And I think that, looking at this list, my first, my first thought immediately was just go with MSBA, it's the least expensive, and it's kind of what they do, I mean, as far as supporting the schools within the state. But again, the price point is something that has to be very sensitive.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, Kevin, isn't one of the defects or the drawbacks of MSBA is that they release the names of all candidates right away, which would keep some candidates who don't want their district to know that they're looking, someone wants to decide?
So state, state statute says that that is against the law, so I cannot imagine why MSBA is doing that, but I think that that's the perception of using MSBA.
But if you turn to page nine of the packet from the MSBA sponsored session at the conference, on page nine, it talks about, when do the names of applicants become public, about, just below halfway on the page. And so this is their packet, their FAQs, the names of applicants for employment are private, and the names of finalists are public. So they're staying in their packet, they're keeping it private, and it says, for additional information, please refer to Minnesota way to practice that. So I think that practice has changed as the laws and statutes have changed in our state.
So again, having that conversation with a couple of leadership folks at MSBA, their perception was, again, that the privacy of all the applicants wouldn't be as private within a MSBA search firm as we have some of the others. Well, that is their perception, that's what the staff, clearly, the state statute and some of this document, that's different than what they said. But if the perception of their, of superintendents is, that they do, right, and it's, so they're, these folks kind of recommended to look at some of the search firms, traditional search firms as well, but I heard other, you know, that MSBA does good, so I just think we need to go through these materials, there's a lot more granularity to find out what the pros and cons of each of them are.
So does it make sense for the subcommittee to do that over the next week or two, and then come back to the board, the recommendation the next board meeting?
If the recommendation, the board continues, subcommittee, yes. The subcommittee is charged to work until this meeting, so if we're going to continue a subcommittee, I would think that would be a good task for them to consider, and then we mentioned somewhere, as we give the rest of the board members, to have a chance to read the information as well, and form our opinions, if that was a discussion in the next board meeting. But it does then push the search out another two weeks. So if you go back to the packet of information that we were talking about, on page two down, where it says, should we be searching for replacement interim, and looking at the other metro openings, there are two other openings in the metro area that were both announced in September, and look at some of the other timelines of other districts, outstate districts, applications where they're going to start the board review process are January 12th, February 16th, February 23rd. So this would push us out another, I mean, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. So it pushes out another two weeks, our ability to put this information together. The other thing we have to consider is, as I did research, and this is on the website, and we didn't print this thing, I'm sorry, we didn't have that, when you look at the process of searching for a superintendent, I gathered some information about the, that sort of the phases of doing that, we have a really important phase just in determining what goes into the job description. I mean, we got the current job description, but we need input from the community, the staff and others in terms of leadership profile development, and I would think we really want to start that at the next board meeting. So I would be concerned about the timeline if we waited to the next board meeting, deciding if the board wants to do a special meeting to give that input, and we've got to be open and public about it, but those are my two things I'm saying, it's important board work, but it's a really tight timeline.
Well, I hear two things, I want to hear, do you want the subcommittee to continue to work?
Right.
Is there some, I already said yesterday, is there some consensus for discussion about that?
I agree.
But we can't make a choice of a reason to, to look at all the requests for information, so.
Well, there's all these possibilities listed here too, and there's only three on those. And, I mean, and also timeline, we, in my opinion, we just take the time that we need to take, okay? Just because he's leaving at the end of June doesn't mean he has to be replaced right away at the end of June, and we have to rush and find somebody near him to be the best fit, by buying a house, buy the best, take the time you need to take to get the right one. So I'm just saying, I don't know that we should work, we should be stressing out, we're working too much about it, and just start to move forward.
So the potential problem with a slower timeline could be slower candidate pool, and a failed search, and an interim situation next year, with the potential for levy could be very, very difficult. I just laid it on the table, a concern I would have, if we moved too slowly, we would, there could be other applications. I agree, we need to hire the best person for the job, but I think if we slow down too much, then I think we need to go back to the question of, are we searching for an interim, or are we searching for a full-time employment?
And I would just add that, we don't need to slow down the process in getting the qualifications set, and getting the application date set, that's not where the slow, that's not where we should be taking our time. That part we should execute as quickly as possible.
We should keep looking at that.
Right. I'm sorry, we should keep looking at that.
Yes.
While I give the information, we'll want to do it first.
Yes. Well, that's part of the contract though with the search company. So if you look at the planning preparation phase on the nice summary chart that Nicole and Lynn have provided for us, as I referred to these things, but there's a whole piece in this beginning piece where we need to identify, you know, leadership profile development, and the input from community and staff would be run by the search firm. And so, to me, you have to pick search firm first, and then they start working with us to do these tasks, and so if we're using a search firm, that has to, I mean, I don't see how we can move forward with those other pieces unless we change the contract and say, well, we'll do the profile development ourselves, which would then push that work to existing staff.
Because already the projections were for a three to four month process, so I can't imagine waiting all three or four months.
Question for Cole. What is the range of fees in aggregate for each of the three firms? Would you know that offhand?
No, I'm not offhand, I couldn't recite different numbers, but one thing that they did say was that, even though we have costs in there to my, to my point, they're, they're all relatively, that's the full proposal, so they put their full, I can give everything packaged to you. So within those costs, they could range and go up or down depending on what we want. So they could be three hands on, they could come and do onsite interviews, they could just, but as we're looking at these costs, just note that that could be adjusted and modified if the board has directed them to change, so that's one caveat. But there are some other fees, like I said, if they came in and did the interview scoring on site work, there would be some additional costs for that, depending on how much money they have. So I did note that the page numbers, those, the totals you guys have, there's page numbers for each of those that shows that there is an additional cost.
How do you have them?
I don't see that, just from reading clearly, but they can be a full service if you want this one. But on this document, real quickly, that those areas at the top kind of go through what Lucy was talking about, from beginning to end, and that's kind of a timeline, and most of the time, they show, you know, packet goes through April if not May, and kind of give you, when you have to kind of look through it, it shows you when the application, how they do the screening, it's all on that page, when they get you semi-finalists, and have you guys look for, as the board, and all those, they have a term ending, which is processes in each of these three. I just think we need to also be mindful of the fact that because these other positions that have been on there, that their deadlines are sooner, which means the applicant pool will shrink, that people feel like they don't know when we're going to come to deadline, and then they'll take another job, so we need to be mindful of that to what we fall in that bigger picture, which I think is why we need to, this is a matter of urgency.
Going back to my next question too, on the packet, on page two, there's possibilities, and discussing those possibilities, we knew we won't be able to go out and get necessarily phone back from all eight groups that we knew of, some of them were very much national, we knew their prices would be much higher to fly in, consultants on a regular basis to work with us. So based upon reviews and conversations at MSBA, we selected sort of the top three that would come in, we would hope at a good price, and have good history. Lynn and Nicole are also able to get up and back from the research companies as well, and so that's why there's only three proposals to consider.
That's reasonable. It's the purpose of the subcommittee. So when will we be able to make this decision?
Depends on the authority of the board, I mean, it sounds like we're in a
Continuing the subcommittee.
Subcommittee. So then the question is, does the subcommittee have the authority to have that, these three?
Other board members have something?
So are we asking the subcommittee to continue on and then come back with the recommendation on one to the board, or?
Or are we asking the subcommittee to choose, to choose whether to start the process?
Yeah, are we?
I think, for a subcommittee, it's hard for us to answer, because
We're on the committee.
We're on the committee, so it's really up to the board members how comfortable you are with that, and I'm fine either way.
I trust them to be really thorough and do a good job of it. There's a lot of interest, people are talking, and there's only three metro positions available, St. Anthony, which will be a similar pool, Osseo, which will have no
Hold the same.
No, 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 so, and there aren't, there were many jobs last year, there weren't those.
Well, I'm comfortable with the subcommittee doing, it just doesn't vary in price.
I agree.
I agree.
The, the subcommittee meetings will be posted and open, so because they're posted and open and based on committee logs, as many board members as wanted to attend could attend the conversation, so it's not excluding other board members from it, but it keeps the process moving forward.
Are those board members being audience members basically?
Not too long. Lynn and Nicole are there?
Right, that's the case. Yeah, it's a board, subcommittee, tax board, or whatever. We would need to set the meetings tonight before we left, so they could be posted, and so, I don't know what to do after a German.
Well, if you were, if you were out for it, I mean, I would support that, but it's kind of a big undertaking, but, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with it if you are.
Time is of the essence, so I think that it's our biggest job, so I think that we're cool.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you for leaving. District survey.
Thank you. I believe in your package, you should have a front and back page document, survey questions from February 2018. We'll be contracting, as spring said, I want to give a couple examples of what they do in this. They've done it to us for our surveys the last several, the last several times we've done it. They usually ask between 30 and 35 questions, the surveys take about 10 minutes. The findings that they have shared is that if you did a 50, 60 question survey, the people who are on the phone, they're polite, but they all expediate it as quickly as possible, 30 to 35 is about the right number. They cert, they have purchased cell phone numbers, and they use a mix, but they use more cell phone numbers. And they also identify a band of border activation network in the score range of cases, which are more likely border runs. They do statistical analysis, and they will be present, and they'll present in person to school board and to administration. They also do a follow-up survey in the early summer that shows any movement on the electoral. One key piece about them in terms of their demographics, they determine what the demographics are, and that's based on public data that the state of Minnesota has, I believe it's at the, at Washington County in the border registration files. And so if, for example, they are thinking that it's 52% women, 48% men, then they'll ask 52% women, and when they hit that number, they stop, they will not just, they won't go into that, that group anymore. Same thing with other, other groups. So they want to get as representative as possible, and it's based on our actual demographics. So to me, these are really key pieces, this is why I think that it will do a really good job. And their history has been pretty good as well. The questions that they want to have, that I want to see if we can come to agreement on, these are questions that they had before, grade for the school district, grade for the, consider it financial management, the Amida Public Schools, what grade would you give to financial management? Those are questions that we've asked all the time. And they've also continuously asked an open-ended question, what's the best thing about Amida Public Schools? Open-ended, if you could change one thing, please describe it briefly, open-ended, and they'll compile those as well. Then the revoke and replace questions, and their verbiage is, I'm going to read some statements about the letter proposal the district is considering, please tell me whether the information in each statement will make you more likely, less likely to vote or go for replacement. And they go through it with all of these things, and we've used some of these before. The numbers in here are a little bit soft, because we need to make sure that we get the right number from Washington County as to the median value, and then also work with them, we have a time set up, I think it's Tuesday of next week, with Don Lipton, who's done this before, and Stacy Childers, who will be coming out to make sure that we are having the right numbers. So for example, if median value home, I think it's supposed to be around $4,000, what does that impact mean? So we don't have those all right now, but we will on Tuesday. The district then will be forced to cut its budget by X amount, of the X amount of teaching positions, class sizes, district will reduce programs like art music, bilingual, this would be forced to reduce after-school athletic and extracurricular, reduce engineering program, kids with intelligence, reduce our math and reading specialist. These were all questions that we asked last time, the last few times around as well. Then on the back side, then, they talk about the levy proposal the district is considering, if the information makes you more likely, less likely to revoke or replace. Be able to maintain existing class size, be able to improve security, strengthen the engineering program, district will strengthen its kids with intelligence, district will be able to continue to provide math and reading specialist. Those were all questions that we had before. If we do pass a levy, I would say that we would be able to reduce, exist, we would reduce class sizes instead of maintain. So we need to have a little bit of conversation on that one. If the levy passes, and if, with a rate, I believe that we would, if reduced class Then they ask a lot of you, if this information has changed your opinion, and then they also have some scenarios that they put out there, and they do it in two different ways. One is, and they rotate this through, they have, generally speaking, three different probabilities would be increased, increased by X amount per year for the average homeowner, and then they tell what the average homeowner value is, and they would do different scenarios. And this is where it was soft, but we'll have that solid by Tuesday afternoon, I think, probably. And then we have some questions, some suggestions from the school board members. Number three down here, about two thirds of the way down, what affects your willingness to spend more? It's going to be to get more teachers, more counselors, or more programs, and then among And then among the metro area school districts, Monta Media ranks 40th in the state in local levy on 48, that means that the school districts got more money than local levy than Monta Media, does this make you more likely, less likely, or has no impact? I changed the question around a little bit, because that sticks with the verbiage that we had when we went out for the levy in 2014. And then this number is the $1,400 that you've seen before you'll see again tonight, Monta Media receives almost $14 less per student in metro area, does this make you more likely, less likely? These are questions I would not ask before, but I think they're good questions, and I think we should consider adding them. And then the final question, this is what they had before, Monta Media School districts can be trusted to properly manage local tax revenue, and then the other one, I would never vote for a tax increase no matter what, and then there's some demographic questions. So this is about 30 questions in all, I think that it does a pretty good job, but I'm open to suggestions, and we will have some final hard numbers on that. I'd also open those suggestions on verbiage or verbiage on those things. As I said, it's an eight to 10 week process for them, so they would have the survey done and the results done. I've asked for a target date of March 22nd, that's a study session for the school board, and so that's, and the email I've gotten back is that it's doable, but they're going to need to get started on things.
This is separate from the work of the search?
Right, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear here.
And so we're just going to, and how much does this cost?
I would say $14,000, $18,000.
You're getting money from your board?
We're getting $10,000 from District 916.
And I'm sorry, how many, how many people would it, would be included?
400.
And you said March 22nd, is that the date by which the survey would have taken place?
They would have the survey done, and all of their results tabulated, and they would make a presentation to school board, that's study session, and that's... Did I say the 22nd or 9th? I think that's the right date.
That's fine, I just, so I guess I'm, I understand this is just asking about the possibility of a levy, but will this catch people off guard?
Well, we've been talking about it since October, but yes, it probably will. People don't pay attention until they pay attention.
So is there a way to make sure people understand that a decision has not been made when they're being asked this question? Or do you think that's not being?
I can ask that, we've not done that in the past.
I don't know that we need to do it here in the survey, but is there a way, I mean, how have you, how have you done that in the past? Have you?
Oh, through the community, it's been communicated in the Globe, I already put it away for press, and I think so far it's all been speculation. Speculating that it might happen, that definitely...
Anybody else?
Is it just a phone survey?
Yes, it is.
Do, I mean, any thoughts to using a little more modern technology?
We have access to our family's email addresses, but not the larger community.
Do, I'm sorry, do they include cell phones?
Yeah, they purchase cell phone numbers, I can't remember where the company's located. They will use some landlines, but not very many, what they have found is that...
No one answers them.
And older people.
Forty percent of people don't have one.
Right, and it's older people that would be the ones more likely to, and I can skew your data.
And so can't you, when we find out what the exact total is, could you let us know?
Exact cost?
If it's $14,000, oh, yes, cost.
No, it's $18,000.
It is $18,000.
Minus two.
So the data set will be back, will that be called interhales, if those, the opening question?
Yes, and it also includes the cross tabs that are most relevant, so for example, by demographic groups, what do they think?
Children, children.
Yes.
Will there be comparison, because we're using the same question as before, will there be multiple comparison data?
I can ask for that, and I believe they would do that, but I'm sure I ask.
What would the caller ID say? Will it say Springstead?
I don't know.
I'd like to find that out, because I don't answer the phone, because I don't know who it is. So if it says Springstead, I'm not going to answer it. If it says Public School District 32, I'll probably answer it.
I have another question, so is this a contest through 916, or could we contract with anyone in 916, let's start over, up to $100?
The left.
So did we compare?
Yeah, we looked at Morris Leatherman, they're probably the most common firm that does this, but as I put in the top part of that, the reason why, as Craig said, I think is super better for us, are those reasons I busted.
I'm just curious if there, I know this is getting too far in the weeds, but the border activation network, I just, I'm not sure if that's the most accurate, just from past experience, the phone numbers were so inaccurate, and I...
Yeah, that was four years ago, and the cell phone number technology, everybody has it, and those numbers are just private.
I mean, if it's more accurate, because my experience with border activation network was not a positive.
No, either.
This has not changed.
Just what about the...
Turning to Mike's point, yeah, I mean, the number of spam calls we get on our cell phones, if, you know, it'll say 651, then it'll have Minneapolis, who, you know, you can kind of figure out that's what it is, but they are getting better and better, and I really, if I cannot identify the phone number, so I'd just say it'd be nice to have a little clarity on that, of what it is that's going to show up. If it's just a plain unidentified phone number, sometimes it says unknown caller.
I'll ask that.
I will never answer those, just because if I don't want to resort at, milk resort hotel in Florida, if I don't want to...
That's a good deal, but it just makes it...
And perhaps we should, it would be useful data for us to have how many people actually answer their phones, so we're aware if this is good for the future. If this is, I mean, there's all kinds of studies, scientific studies that show people just don't answer their phones.
And just to add to that, maybe I can, this one might ask this question, is the 400, is that actual people they reach?
Yes.
Okay. So then, if they could, right, if they could tell, the number of things that comes to us, if they have to call 2,000 people versus 1,000 people, to make a warrant, they get 400, but who, but pick one of the next person, they'll reach somebody, but the cost doesn't change for us?
No, it does not. And one of the things that, it's two things, it's 400 plus it's in the right demographics. So let's say there's eight different groups, and one group is 30%, one group is 4%, they'll call until they get the 400. All right, so I will find out what the caller ID says, says on their call, and figure out what the exact cost is, check to see if they give you a comparison of past years 2018 to 2020, and Julie, what's your question?
Because, well, you know what, I was not, I was not understanding if they were going to reach 400 people, to call 400 people, so I...
Does that get into one of them? Because you said...
Yeah, I'd be, but we'd be curious to know how many people they called, to guess 400 people would answer.
No, they're very statistique, yes.
And I'm curious, I showed them cell phones that are my name, so how do we know personally if that's in my line of demographic? So if they call one of my cell phone numbers, they're going to be a 13-year-old female who is not aware of these things, or 13-year-old boys who are a bit more centrist in this, so I mean, if there's a way to assure the demographic of students answering the phone, that would be nice to know.
According to, I called them, talked with Stacy and then Matt Stark, because there was statistical analysis, and they said something to the effect that they're going to call Lucy Payne, are you Lucy Payne? No, I'm not. Is she available? Yes, and put her on OR.
Okay. So you've got a name, it's demographic, they call high, you're number, and you could ask this other person, thank you, that's helpful.
Anything else?
If you think of a different question, another one that you'd like, I will run by Stacy and Don as well on some of the verbiage, it may change it a little bit. I'm going to ask for their advice on revoke or replace, if that's clear, if that's what that means, and so we'll have some better information.
Actually, there is one thing, if you want to leave a question around, if you knew it was, because inflation has put us in a situation, you know, are you aware of the fact that inflation wasn't taken into account at the previous levy, or some sort of way?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, we have that, like among the metro school districts, we rank 40th, we, we've got almost 40...
Yeah, but they're going to say, well, we just gave you a levy, and you're not living within your means, and we're not living within our means because of inflation and not an increase in overall income of the tax base to keep up with inflation, so that's something...
Metro districts have.
Right. If we don't have that, is there a question, is there a way to formulate a question or inquiry around that, making sure they understand that, or some...
Could you give a statement?
Give a statement.
I'm thinking something along the lines of inflation's increased by X percent in the last whatever time frame, but state funding has only increased by this, because this makes it more likely, less likely.
Something like that, yeah. You need to tell them why, or give a sort of a reason why, instead of saying, well, if you don't do this, we're going to cut all the stock, cut this and that.
All right, excellent survey. We've been very interested in why some of our students are actually leaving our district, and so we've been doing this survey, the families in the last couple of years who have left, to ask them about why they're leaving, to see if we can get some information, and we could, is there something we could address about that?
Thank you, and yeah, for all, it's crucial, I was asked to take a look at why maybe students have left that district, and that's always a question, when we have students who live in such a big district, but we want to know why some students leave, and so forth and so on, and also what we want to do is be able to track future students who leave, and that's, so this is really the first survey, here, it's kind of a rough survey of, just to get some information, and then as I presented, if there are certain things that you would want on a future survey, or ask to add to the survey, you know, please let me know, and then I'll be working with the schools, and the, for example, the middle school, the guidance secretary, so when she receives the information from the school, that a student's transferring out, she can contact the parent by email, and have them draw a Google survey right now, it's a Google sheet or a Google form, so, and then we, I have been tracking those surveys, and so we have those, and then I've been kind of tracking those. Why did, they asked me to come tonight to just kind of explain what I have so far. Right now, there were, I had Bonnie Zimmerman to send me the information about students who have left, so she sent me the information for the last two school, or the last three years, and so I emailed, and I just roughly put down an information sheet for you, 153 families who have left the district, and 86 from one year, and 67 from that point until now, or until when I received this information. And those were the questions that we asked, first of all, what grade was your child in, and then, but most importantly, what was the reason why your child left? And then I also wanted to know, so that we could share with our administration, is what are some of the areas that you feel like we could improve upon, and then also, I want to make sure that what are we doing well? So what are the one or two areas that you could say that we're doing well, that went well for you while you're here in the district? And then I also, just as a scale, ask them to rate us one to five, with five being the greatest, the best, and then also any additional comments that they might have for us to pick up in the exit interview. And as you can see, I just put in the results right now for question one, that was the most important that you would want to know. 10 families, of the 41 that responded, we had 41 surveys, or 41 people responded, 10 families moved out of the district, for job location, or whatever reason, they moved out of the district, some of them to out of the country, some of them out of the state, and I will tell you that when they ranked one through five, all but one ranked us a five, and one ranked us a four. So when they were leaving, they were very happy with our school, one actually said they were moving out of state, were keeping their house in Monta Media, and were really looking forward to when they can get back. And so, so that's great information for us to know. Four chose to attend private school, and five wanted more challenging academics, that's what they stated as the reason, and then also five left for social reasons. And I kind of want those together, that sometimes you said that students, our students did not fit in, did not have peers that they wanted, just didn't feel like they fit into the school system. Some said that their student was being bullied, and felt like they had to leave, but again, that was five of them. Some of the other reasons are, left to go play hockey in another school, and again, that was one response, but I personally know of a few families, probably five, that had that as the same reason, just had to get back to me. Children need to feel safe to express religious beliefs, want more traditional curriculum, being that with all of our computers we have in the classroom, and all the technology and so forth, and they're able to bring their cell phones to school and so forth, they didn't want that, they wanted more traditional, where there was more textbook, and so they felt like they could find a school to do that. Lack of diversity, philosophical differences, wanted to do online school, so there's just various amount of reasons. What we're going to do is try to, myself and administration, we'll look for themes about maybe why students are leaving, if there's something that shows a theme, or specific reasons and so forth, and then that would, we can take a look at that, and how do we approach that, you know, to help those kids, or help families feel more comfortable and safe, or whatever the reason might be for that, so. Again, it's a very broad view right now, there was only 41 surveys, so I'm hoping that if we have students leave, that being able to have our secretaries be able to talk to the parent right away, because they usually come in and say, our children are leaving, we're going to take them out, we're going to get something from the school, and then our guidance secretary's or our secretaries could have a conversation with our parents, saying that we were ready to fill out that exit survey, we may even have some paper copies in case they don't have a computer, and they can fill it out, use a paper copy as well. So again, this is a brief overview of where we're at, and where we're going in the future. Any questions?
When we have a more complete data set with more returns and things like that, can we have the data worked out by building? I mean, some of these issues can be very different, I mean, actually, the hockey is a high school issue, but some of the...
Yeah, actually, it is a middle school issue.
But if they're looking at the high school program, because I know that same thing was you're speaking of, they're looking at the high school program, they're leaving because of the high school program. So you're right for that one, but when I look at this idea of social reasons, I mean, that would help us determine, are there things that we can do react to from the data we have, and knowing the building piece would help, I think, our administrators and our teachers think about these things in different ways. A district-wide response, we might have been building the schools addressing how, but we don't have.
And we asked for which grade were your students in when they leave, so that should be a, give us an idea of which building they're...
So just when you provide that data set to us, when you have the opportunity to bring it down, I'd like to see if I can go in.
Any other comments?
At our finance committee meeting, did we want to try to have open enrollment working district? Just as a data point?
Well, we can tell that from, I'm sorry, I have a question.
I don't think so, I, there wasn't a direction that I heard of that, there was a comment.
There was a comment, so I wasn't sure if we wanted to try to include that, I mean, was that clear? I think that...
That's the data point that you need to assist us, so we can go and see who's left. I don't believe in the survey, you can go see who's left, and were they open enrollment students, or were they resident students?
Maybe if you want to have that survey...
That would be something that the secretaries could probably find out.
But we were trying to include that in the conversation, and it was not clear.
Right. But is that something you're asking?
No, no, I think the time, we need to get the information, just, we're going to have to just bring it out, because we talked about it.
Anything else? Thanks for doing that, Ken.
Yeah, I want to applaud you for, for doing it, with your anecdotal stories about why people leave, and it's much better to have data, just to thank you for doing that, plus.
We were talking about this in a conversation the other day, and I do want to point out, we realize that we, we recognize that we won't be able to meet every single need that gets listed, it really is a data point for us to understand when we're setting numbers for what we want our enrollment to look like, and what we want programs to look like, this is one more piece of information, so we make a more informed decision.
And if you want further updates, it might be something that in the summer, I would think would be the time, or in August, because a lot of kids who are leaving, that's when we start getting all those requests for records. we start getting all those requests or records from other schools. And so that might be a good time to see all the kids who have left from the year before or aren't returning from our schools, why that would be, so that might be a good time for another update.
I would like that, and plus that at this point, when we say that summer, whenever that starts to happen, we get that kind of group work.
Just to watch trends?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2018-19 Initial Enrollment Scenarios and Related Budget Options. Included in your board package, you're going to find the same documents that are on screen. Patrick is going to help me drive here, and I want to start by thanking the building administration, certainly for their presence here tonight and the work for the better part of three months to really help put this document together. So, I'll start with the table of contents here, and really start with the goal and the purpose of the document. So, it's really a two-part goal and purpose. The first one, and I do apologize for those school board members that were on the finance committee, the finance committee had a chance to hear a lot of this information before the meeting tonight, some of this is going to be a little bit redundant, but I think very important as we go through the process. So hearing something twice certainly in my case can hurt. So, first rule, single point of reference for the eighteen-nineteen budget process. Certainly, we're sitting here on January twenty-fifth, and the preliminary budget for next year does not need to be approved until June fourteenth. So we have quite some time, but given the deficit forecast that you're going to see tonight, it's important to start now and then change, refine, update this document as needed, but have this be sort of a single point of reference so that you know what to expect, and you're going to see the same thing, meeting after meeting, to try to avoid some confusion and related frustration. And really, the second point here is to tell the story, so as not to be misconstrued into something that this is not. Providing a narrative before providing sort of a spreadsheet with the rapid unit expenditures can help alleviate any misconception regarding this budget. So those are really the two main goals of this document. So, as you can see on the table of contents, we have four main sections here. You have an introductory section where we'll review some budget levy and history information. Section two, enrollment information. Section three, some important background information on some budget assumptions and policy. And then really the meat and potatoes of the forecast. Section four, enrollment scenarios and related budget options. And I want to emphasize something that was illustrated pretty well in the finance committee meeting. Certainly, this is not a final document. The enrollment scenarios presented tonight certainly relate to budget adjustments. But nothing is final tonight, certainly it's just a discussion item. The budget discussions are open to change and be updated as need be, but it is important that we start to hone in and focus in on enrollment target for next year. So that's really the main driver of the document tonight. Flipping to the executive summary, I am not going to read each page, I'm going to do the best that I can to highlight this, but certainly want to take our time to not miss out on any important information as sort of the background information of the document. I will note on the summary that all enrollment budgetary decisions at the school district seek to continue to support the mission. And our mission is to provide a learning community in which all students can learn, thrive, and succeed in the global society. So you can trust that every recommendation that you're going to see from administration was vetted through that lens of supporting our mission. Additionally, all enrollment budget decisions are vetted through the lens of keeping expenditures and taxpayer burden to a minimum while continuing our traditional academic excellence. And you can see below our district belief statements that we factored into the forecast as well. Flipping to page two, the purpose of the document, and I covered this quite a bit, you can see Minnesota Statute one-twenty-three by B dot seventy-seven, we are required to approve the preliminary budget for the upcoming school year each year by June thirtieth. So you'll recall our fiscal year runs from July to June, and we're required to approve the preliminary budget by June thirtieth. Again, the purpose is to provide district administration, school board members, and the community with a single document as a point of reference. And then you can see final board approval will take place on June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Section one, on the next page, introductory section, so we'll start by looking at budget overview and financial prospects for future years. So a lot of this is review information. As you know, over seventy percent of our revenue in the general fund comes from the state in form of the state aid funding formula. For years, the state aid funding formula has not kept up with inflation nor increasing student needs and educational costs. The two thousand and seventeen legislative session ended with an approved two percent increase in the state aid funding formula for the biennium. So for this year, the state aid formula allowance is six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars per adjusted pupil unit. Next year, that number increases by two percent, up to six thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. The chart at the bottom of the page in the introductory section really shows a pretty strong illustration of what we're calling the structural imbalance that exists in our state with regard to the state aid funding formula. So as you can see, since two thousand and three, that solid red line, which is the state aid funding formula adjusted for inflation, has increased by one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, from two thousand and three figure of four thousand nine hundred and sixty-six, up to six thousand nine hundred and eight. During the same timeframe, the state aid formula allowance has increased by one thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. This has created a structural imbalance for all school districts in the state of Minnesota of almost six hundred dollars per adjusted pupil unit. If you take nothing else away from the meeting tonight, I hope that this is something that we all understand is a going concern for not just the Montomedi School District, all school districts in the state of Minnesota. Operating levy information on the next page. We are, like many districts in the state, and we are fortunate to support or supplement our state funding through lower approved tax levies. For example, just an example, our capital projects levy, which we are, have talked about numerous times, is really the tools for teachers in the classrooms, is lower approved, and that provides valuable dollars in the classrooms for our teaching staff. The thousand forty-four dollars per adjusted pupil unit, fancy way of counting students, that we have in our levy revenue from open taxpayers is very valuable, extremely valuable, but not enough to maintain our current investment in student achievement long-term. You can see some of the bullet points that are related to our operating levy. Our levy is twenty, our operating levy is twenty-one percent of our budget. So you can see state aid and the general fund, about seventy cents on the dollar. Our operating levy is about twenty cents on the dollar. So between state aid and operating levy, you have the vast majority of our revenue in the general fund. Our current levy is lower than almost all of our comparable districts, if you scroll down to the bottom. And that levy is, is over nine hundred dollars less than the maximum allowed by state laws. So you can see our district levy per student, Montomedi School District is at a thousand forty-four dollars per adjusted pupil unit. And we picked some comparable districts, both geographically and in size, and you can see where some of the other district levy per student falls. So I do think that frankly, this is remarkable, considering that the U.S. News and World Report in two thousand and seventeen had Montomedi the third grade of high school in the state of Minnesota. This reality, we are doing remarkable things in terms of student achievement with that district levy per student. Next page, please. To that end, it's important to look, just by way of background information, at our dollars spent per student. So you can see that in the seven county metro area, on average, in the blue, revenue per average daily membership, again, student, on average, the seven county metro receives twelve thousand five hundred dollars per student and spends just slightly less than that at twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars per student. Montomedi School District spends and receives about twelve hundred dollars less per student in the seven county metro area. Now, this is partially driven by our operating levy amount that we just talked about in the previous slide, and also partially driven by a relatively low free reuse counts and the related categorical revenue that's attached to those. So, in any case, the twelve hundred dollars less per revenue, or per student and revenue that we receive makes it difficult to find areas for reductions that we're going to look at here in the coming pages as well. Shifting on the next page to the section two, related to our enrollment. It's, I'll read the first paragraph here word for word because it is critically important. Maintain level enrollment is predicated upon acceptance and attendance of open enrollment students in order to maintain grade levels with the previous school year. Any deviation from the established enrollment will cause a decrease in the student-generated revenue of the total fund. Very important that we understand this critical point. Revenue is in large part student-driven. Setting an enrollment target is really the first key piece to creating a balanced budget for next year. So whether that target is at the level where we're at this year, it's less than the level we're at this year, or it's more than the level we're at this year. It's important to set that target and meet or slightly exceed that target. Coming in underneath that target is just not sustainable in the long term. Now, I will admit that the district enrollment here chart is slightly off based on the vertical axis here. It's just what was kicked out in graphics, to be honest with you. But the point here is to show the four-year history on enrollment, and then our two thousand and seventeen, eighteen current year estimate for enrollment, and then our budgeted, our projected enrollment for next year. So you can see that in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we had three thousand two hundred and ninety-four ADMs, and then we dropped to two thousand two hundred and thirty-four last year. This year, the revised budget was built on three thousand two hundred and forty. The good news is that our current counts are about three thousand two hundred and forty-eight, so we're slightly above where we approved the revised budget for the current year, which is the direction we want to see long-term. Flipping to the next page, looking at some current year enrollment analysis. And again, estimated at this point, you can see our resident and non-resident counts in each of the grades. We'll go through that, because you can see it on the screen. A total resident population of two thousand three hundred and seventy-five, non-residents of eight hundred and seventy-three, total enrollment, as I mentioned, at three thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Certainly, we recognize that student enrollment is the main driver of general fund revenue. And as I mentioned previously, setting an enrollment target, missing the target low will cause a decrease in student-generated revenue. Therefore, I think it's, administration thinks it's important to identify, prior to identifying budget, budget adjustments, excuse me, to identify enrollment targets for the upcoming school year. So that's really the first step that we're going to look at here in the coming pages. On page eight, section three, before we get into really the meat and potatoes of the enrollment scenarios and budget options, look at our budget process. It's important to note that the budget process is really a continuous four-step process, and each step does require school board approval and is open for public inspection and comment, okay? So the first step is really the property tax levy. So the school board certified its property tax levy via the truth in taxation presentation last few months. And that really kicks off the budget forecasting for the next year. Stage two is our current stage that we're in, looking at the preliminary budget. The preliminary budget approval includes analysis and assumptions on staffing needs, enrollment, legislative impact, and other revenue and expenditure estimates. And then, generally speaking, after the start of the fiscal year in December or January, for us, it was December of this year, we will look at a final or revised budget. And that revised budget really just tries to tighten up your variances between budget and actual based on things that were estimates during the prelim stage that are known to be true during the revised stage. For example, this is not a funding year at the legislature, but next year, being a funding year, and often, the timeline is the school board is required to approve the preliminary budget before the state legislature sets the funding formula. And so we are approving a budget based on an estimate of the funding formula. So the revised budget, at that point, hopefully, we know what the increase is to the state aid funding formula. So things of that nature, that's our revised budget. And then finally, the fourth stage, annual financial report and the fiscal audit. For us, this takes place in November, where we finally get our audited financials from the previous year. So that's it for that page on the budget process. I touched on the two percent increase included down the bottom. And then finally, on the next page, we've talked about this as well, but important to note that the school board has been approved fund balance policy number seven fourteen, that states that the school board shall maintain, strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of eight percent of the total general fund expenditures. For us, that amount is about three point one million, and provides for between four and five weeks of operating expenditures, which is important, given the not-so-distant history of some of the state holdbacks, it's important to have that cash balance to sort of sustain ourselves should there be a budget shortfall at the state level. And then, at the bottom there, just under assumptions. So often, as required by timing, the preliminary budget includes assumptions for staff and union contracts that have not been settled. And that is the case for us this year as prior years as well. Budgeted expenditure amounts related to contracts are subject to change depending on the final settlements. Now, after all of that, we will get into sort of the lie of this, which you may be wondering at this point, I certainly am. So the following enrollment scenarios and budget options are gathered from recommendations from building and district administration based on the financial forecast for eighteen-nineteen. Scenarios in the following pages are based on initial ideas and recommendations and certainly subject to change based on needs or updated information from staff or the school board. It's a fancy way of saying this is our initial projection on budget options related to enrollment scenarios. I'd really like us to focus in on the enrollment scenarios and enrollment targets tonight, and then we'll be able to narrow in on our related budget adjustments as a result of that. And then finally, on the financial forecast, the budget deficit presented below is the amount in the general fund, that one point six million that we've seen, or that we saw on January fourth. That amount assumes same enrollment year-over-year, so the three thousand two hundred and forty-eight same enrollment year-over-year, and then zero budget reductions for next year's budget, which we know that certainly there will be budget adjustments, and we'll be looking at our enrollment targets as well. So that's really our base. Flipping to the next page, section four. So what we, what administration has done here, just to try to provide some clarity, is come up with three main scenarios to begin the conversation. Scenario one, same number of students year-over-year. Scenario two, adding a certain number of students. Scenario three, adding a certain number more of students. And so just to overly simplify this, scenario one, same number of students, budget reduction is the one point six million. Scenario two, adding forty students from this year, roughly ten thousand dollars per student. So if you add forty students, that budget reduction goes down to one point two million. Scenario three would be adding five students from this year, budget reduction down just under one point one. So it's a sliding scale, and I'd like to just go through quickly the scenarios if I could. So under each scenario, you have an action, outcome, and then an anticipated budget reduction. So you can see that under scenario one, the same number of students year-over-year, so you can see under column A is our current year enrollment, column B would be the open enrollment applications accepted for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, in order to maintain column C, the current year enroll, or the same enrollment year-over-year. Now, a question came up in the finance committee meeting, and it's a really good one, why is there not a column B number for kindergarten? Under the open enrollment window one options on the resolutions that you're going to see later on tonight, there is a number included there. Just for clarity, I did not include a number here for kindergarten, because we truly don't know how many open enrollment applications we need to accept for next year, because we haven't had kindergarten roundup and know how many resident students to expect for next year. So you'll see the number is carried forward, one hundred and eighty-two this year, under this scenario, we would be projecting one hundred and eighty-two next year. If we slide down to scenario one, building enrollment, so the enrollment analysis K-12 generates the building enrollment that you see there. So Wildwood would be stable enrollment, a zero difference. O.H. Anderson, graduating out some larger classes, bringing in some smaller ones, they would be down twenty students in total for the building. The middle school would be up eight, the high school would be up twelve, such that the total enrollment would be the same year-over-year. total enrollment would be the same year-over-year. Flipping to page 12, and I realize that I'm going through this rather quickly, there's just a lot of information here. Budget option number one, built on enrollment scenario number one. So the same number of students, the reduction of 1.6 million. This is an example of what that budget option could look like. The budget option reductions for Wildwood would be a reduction of one section per grade, K through two, reduction of one specialist in the overall change in the specialist model. And you can see the students, the sections, the average students per section this year compared to next year. And this, again, is just information included for review and to try to, try to provide an illustration as to what that 1.6 million dollars could look like. Certainly not a recommendation at this point. OH Anderson Elementary, the same thing, a reduction of one section per grade in grades three through five, reduction of one specialist position. And you can see the sections this year, the sections next year, and the numbers per section at OH Anderson as well. Flipping to page 13, Montigny Middle School, reduction of the core classes from 10 to nine sections in grades six through eight, reduce music and fayette from 10 to eight in grades six and seven, and then reduce the allied arts wheel from nine to eight sections in grades six and seven. You can see the related sections in the core down below. And then at the high school, finally. And a lot of this at the high school is going to be driven by registration, but the high school reductions, increased class sizes across departments partially dependent on registration, family and consumer science as an elective offering is eliminated, AT school had coaching positions and one athletic offering would be eliminated under this scenario. And then finally, the district-wide, eliminate the contract with the district management group would be a reduction of between 55,000 and 60,000 and then a reduction of one QCOM coach as well. And the question was brought up at the finance committee meeting, certainly QCOM has a restricted finance code, so how could that be a reduction, a reduction in overall general fund? Historically, the district has been somewhat subsidizing the QCOM with some general fund dollars. A reduction of the coach would be reducing that subsidy in QCOM. Page 14, scenario number two, action, outcome, and anticipate a budget reduction. Under the action here would be accept the following students in order to increase enrollment by 40 students next year as compared to this year. Anticipate a budget reduction that drops from 1.6 million to 1.2 million. And you can see in column E, the open enrollment applications accepted. If we scroll down to the bottom, you can see scenario two, the building enrollment, was pointed out in the finance committee meeting that the biggest mover in this is at Wildwood, where Wildwood in scenario one was flat year-over-year. Scenario two, they're increasing their enrollment by 16 students. A couple of reasons for that, as can be expected, we have the highest number of open enrollment applications in the younger grades, namely kindergarten and first grade. So we're looking at the number of applications there as a way to increase the revenue and balance off some of the reductions. Next page, budget option two. And a little, some of this is going to get redundant, but the main purpose for including it here is so you can go back and look at things like students per section and how adding students and keeping the sections really does impact the students per section. So I will note, just by way of comparison, that if you look at kindergarten this year, and this is not a statement on the number of students per kindergarten, whether that number is 182 or 202 or 160. The number of students this year is 182 spread over nine sections, an average of 20.2 students per section. In scenario two, we would have kindergarten adding seven students, roughly $70,000. By doing that, they're able to retain that ninth section, they're adding seven students, so they're adding, they're increasing from 20.2 up to 21 students per section, which is an add of .8 students per section. However, in scenario one, by keeping the same number of students, they're reducing a section and the class sizes would be higher than that. So it's just a way of comparing scenarios one and two. OH Anderson Elementary under scenario two, the reduction, the wording is confusing here. Really what it is, is a reduction of two sections instead of three sections and then a reduction of one specialist position. So I did have the reduction in third grade, certainly under scenario two, they would need to reduce two sections, not three, as stated in scenario one. We would have to see where enrollment comes in per grade to know exactly where that reduction happened. The middle school and high school, fairly bad at this point, just given the time of the year, registration, and some other things that we need to sort through at the board level before we really focus in on what we would add back under scenario two and three at middle school and high school. What we do know is that district-wide reduction is the same in all three options. And then finally, I promise I'm getting to the end of it here. Scenario three, the action would be to accept all of the open enrollment students as of January 16th, so one day after the deadline, with the exception of kindergarten and first grade. The anticipated outcome there would be increase our enrollment by 55 students next year compared to this year. Anticipate a budget reduction would be slightly less than 1.1 million. And you can see the building enrollment down below. Wildwood under this, scenario three would be the same. OH Anderson would be slightly less of a decrease. The middle school would be increasing up to 850 students and then the high school is slightly under the 1,200 mark. Page 17 finally shows option three. Wildwood is same, the same as the section, as the option two, because they are adding 16 kids in both. OH Anderson, again, the same as option two. The differences here are the middle school and high school eliminates the need for reductions and the middle school totaling 100,000, high school eliminates the need for reduction, so So I'll go to the next page and then I'll really try to provide a summary here because again, a lot of information. Would be remiss if we didn't provide a timeline and next steps. So we're sitting here on January 25th, knowing that the budget, all funds does not need to be approved until June 14th. Really, the next two months, February, both the 8th and the 22nd, March, the 8th and the 22nd, are going to be spent hopefully narrowing in on a, an enrollment target and then narrowing in on the related budget adjustments that need to happen related to that target. A couple of other important dates to point out to the school board here. April 12th, you'll see that the proposal will need to happen on the ULAs, which is under request to leave of absence for next year, and then the action on the non-renewed contracts for next year. And then finally, on May 10th would be action on the ULAs for next year. And as I mentioned, formal action on the 1819 preliminary budget on June 14th, which does leave us one meeting left in June if we needed to, to approve the budget as required by statute. So just, just in order to summarize this, the budget options for reductions were included as a way to illustrate options. It is really important that we start to narrow in on enrollment target. I can see that later on down the line, we have open enrollment window one. Should be noted that all of the enrollment scenarios here tie out to the open enrollment window one that's included later on here.
Questions, comments? I was going to say this again a number of times.
Right. The issue is going to be is that we need to narrow down an enrollment target. The principals have done a great deal of work and the Stradoff folks have too in terms of, you know, creating scenarios here. All of this has been predicated on the same enrollment that we had last, that we had this last year. Failure to have that would result in another additional cuts or reductions somewhere along the line. So the target enrollment is kind of the key piece. It's the first thing that we need to have and then we can start going. If the target enrollment is the same as it was last year, that means that we're looking at 1.6 million dollars in reductions. If it's 20, 40, 60 students, less than it was, that means that's a corresponding number of reductions that we have to make. If we add more students, there's less to that. But we need to have that and start moving on that. Now, the open enrollment, which is coming up here, I don't want to get too far ahead, we still have letter E. This is going to be determining where we are, helping us with enrollment. We are graduating 282 kids and we have 181 in kindergarten. We need to gain 100 students just to stay steady as it is. And so if we are wrong on enrollment, we want to be wrong and we want to underestimate as opposed to overestimate.
So what would you like us to do, Nancy?
Can you give us a little bit about half of the move-in situation? I know this looks only open enrollment today and you've got some data for us to work with today on move-ins. I don't see them considered in the scenarios because these scenarios will play out into the actions, my understanding. And so, and understand how we consider move-ins in these models would be helpful.
Great question. So historically, we've looked at sort of a net attrition during the summer months. What are the residents that are moving out versus non-residents that have moved in? We've started to look at what we're calling a cohort survivability and we just started looking at some of this information this week. So to Lucy's point, the retention, if you will, year-over-year, we're assuming at 100%. So for example, the 187 first graders that we have this year, we're assuming we're going to retain 100 of, 100% of them and that will be 187 second graders next year. Now, what we know to be true is that there certainly will be attrition with that number of residents moving out and there will be families moving into our district. What we don't know is where that number is going to fall. This cohort survivability analysis that we looked at takes a three-year average, those three years being 15, 16, 17, and 17, 18, so the most recent three years. And I'll get into this a little bit more, quite a bit more in February, but what we know to be true is that on average, between kindergarten and first grade, we, in the last three years, have grown by about eight students, resident students. Between fifth and sixth grade, we've grown by about seven resident students, based on the average over the last three years. However, when we get into some of the later grades, our cohort survivability is a negative number, such that overall grades K through 12, we have grown the last three years on average by 19 students. For example, if we've started with 182 or 160 resident kindergartners, that number has grown by 19 students by the time they become 12th grade, which is on average 1.6 more residents per year. However, that number is, is difficult to project because we're adding more residents at the lower level and we're actually losing residents as to be expected at the secondary level. So to answer your question, that number, the assumption is 100% retention and we move it back to that number.
So if we're not factoring in this average number of 19 increase in resident students? And so we'll look at some of these scenarios, they're actually 19 students higher?
If you look, if you look at just that piece of it.
Yeah, in total, K through 12.
So actually, in order to maintain the current enrollment, if we assume there's 19 increase across the past years, I mean, you've got, that's enough for making a lot of difference here. That number we should be looking at admitting would actually be 81.
Less than 112. Yep, I'm following.
Right. If you only look at that piece, if you look at the piece of students who are currently attend but are moving out of the district and will have to apply for open enrollment, that's 17, then there's no guarantee that they get in. And so that's very close to a wash in that instance.
I thought though, with those ages, we were, in the end, we were gaining 19 residents across the whole K-12 each year.
Yes, that's reasonable.
Okay, so what are you saying?
I'm saying that we currently have 17 students who are moving out of the district and have applied for open enrollment. They do not have a guarantee of being accepted.
And does that happen every year?
We've only checked at this level last year, we've not checked before.
But once that 19 includes that from past years, because we have lost those students and so that 17 doesn't affect that 19, you don't, those don't wash?
No.
Is that right though? Those numbers really don't wash? Because in that 19, we would have considered the loss of those 17 as an overall district number of residents that's changed.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
Typically, when we look at who's moving in and out of the district, we just look at residents only. We're not looking at open enrollment families that we accept and come in. We're looking at who are residents that move out or are residents, or residents that move in. Sometimes you can have an open enrollment family that, you know, was open enrolled and has decided to move into the district, but that's not the whole 19. I think that was maybe last year, maybe about five families and I'm guessing, I'm trying to remember.
I could just add one point to that because I, it's a critically important point. In prior years, we have made budget reductions, but not to this level. And I want to make sure that we start a conversation about the expected move-ins, knowing that we cannot be below the target that we set, but also understanding that if we make budget reductions in programming athletic programs, that we may not retain all 100% of those students because of that program as well. And I want to make sure that factor.
And as we increase class size and that's the route we go, we lose the potential for future open enrollment families because we've changed what we often do in the district. So we're in a no-win situation. We have a horrible budget, you have a whole job, that's all right.
Good summary.
So did everyone get this? I mean, because to compare the numbers of some of these metro average-sized classes, if you, if you compare this, or did I only get it?
That should be at everybody's place.
It's everything.
It's this, it's this blue packet and it shows page eight that has the elementary class size?
It's in, it's in the, I'm thinking, agenda.
This one?
Oh, you guys.
Stacy, it looks like this.
Yeah.
So it's page eight on there that has the, the average class size for the metro. I, I will prove that earlier today and you can compare and see that some of the numbers in some of those scenarios do not look good.
Because our philosophy, strongly has been to be, to maintain the average within our district. That's what we use a much more benchmark at grade level. So we'd be going outside that philosophy possibly in some of these scenarios.
Pretty big, pretty, pretty far, pretty substantially with, in some of those scenarios. So it's worth comparing that.
So right now, we're on, I mentioned that I didn't have the discussion, but under the action items, we're going to be asked to combine two decisions into one, seems like, and maybe we should save that conversation for later. But what you need tonight is a target enrollment number, right? That is the goal of all of this, is a target enrollment number so you can work on building budgets.
Yes, but in administration's view, just before we can really hone in on the budget adjustments that have to do with it and know where to build the revenue budget, and in order to build our revenue budget, we need to build a target number.
You need that number tonight.
Who's that as an action item?
We're coming at number five.
This is to accept window one.
Right, but you have to have a budget, you have to have a number to target, but now I'm concerned that as you look at action items, we get to that, it's based upon a packet that doesn't consider move-ins and we, you know, and so there's a certain disconnect here. And so as we start chatting, I'm going to be very concerned about coupling two decisions into one thing, the target enrollment and making a target enrollment tonight with the open enrollment numbers, knowing that we haven't considered move-ins and knowing that, there's some other pieces I'll play into that conversation, but I just want to be clear that the packet put together for us with those scenarios will play out later in that next conversation. And it's really what you need is a target number to build a budget with tonight.
I, I need a target number. I'm hesitating to say tonight because it's honestly not mine.
Right. But I think we need one tonight so that we can work on what we're going to be doing in terms of enrollment reductions or not. The other thing is that the longer we delay open enrollment decisions, the less likely we have as students are attending. We lost students last year because we didn't accept them earlier on and so that's why we're moving this up. The idea is that we want to be able The idea is that we want to be able to be accurate in our enrollment, we don't want to be short by 40 cents again.
But I agree, but right now, the way the, the pieces coming up under the action is they are coupled together, because you could, you need different decisions. There's what is the target number, and what do we want to accept tonight for open enrollment? And we've coupled into, if this is your target number, you're accepting this and open enrollment. So I'm a little concerned about those recommendations, if we get to those, so I just want to understand what is needed to move forward, so if we have a target number, then you can move forward with what you're working on, and I hear you're concerned about timeline acceptance. So I'm just trying to understand.
Right. With that, do you want to do a question update?
Yes, my promise is going to be much shorter, and frankly, a good news item for a change for me. So in your board's package, you have a, rather than a spreadsheet, I won't cover it in detail, but I will note for the audience that, as similar to prior quarters, we will do a quarter and budget actual update. So, our fiscal year started on July 1st, December 31st was the end of the second quarter of 2017-18, and as such, we are bringing the budget actual on the expenditure side before tonight for discussion. I am going to flip to the second page of the three pages in your packet that have the general fund in total. I can go through each of the line items, but I'll just highlight the larger variances that I think we should look at. Overall, on the second page, we will see that as of December 31st, 2017, we have spent 40.1% of our general fund budget, and I should note, if I can control this, oh, right here, we have spent 40.1% of our general fund budget in the current year, as of December 31st, 2017. And it should be noted, that's based on the revised budget, that $39,700,000, that's the revised budget that the school board approved in December. So we've spent 40.1% compared to last year at this time, as of December 31st, 2016, we had spent 41.9% compared to December 31st, 2015, we had spent 40.8%. So this is a good news item at this point. The school board approved the 2017-18 revised budget in December that had a projected deficit in the $800,000, $800,000 range. At this point, we cannot foresee, the expenditures are tracking slightly under budget, which would be a good news item. So if revenue holds steady, and the expenditures are tracking slightly under budget, we do not forecast a higher deficit than budgeted at the current revised, and the general fund. I will go over the individual details, other than to say any variances that you see in regular and secondary education areas are going to relate to the difference between budget and actual related to some contract settlements that haven't taken place yet. So if we are less spent as a percentage standpoint than the prior year, the contract has not been settled, and the related retro pay is not been reflected. And the last point I'll bring up, just because it's the end of the second quarter, is why aren't we at 50% spend? Why are we in the 40s, the low 40s? The reason for that, it's all, although we're halfway through the fiscal year, we're not halfway through the fiscal year in terms of our expenditures. The first big payroll that we had for our district was in the middle of September. We have some payments that are made in June related to July and August, that we pull back into the current year, so that's why you're never going to see exactly 50% spend, even though we're halfway through the year. Does that make sense? Okay. The third and final page is just looking at the non-major funds, namely food service and community education. Food service is slightly less in this year compared to last year. That's really related to the timing of some payments to our contracted service for food service management. And then it should be noted, although it can't be seen on the screen, the participation is up this year compared to last year in the food service fund, which is a good thing for our students and also the bottom line in the food service fund. And then community services, you can see that any variances really this year have to do with timing on payments and consulting services related to community service. What we call as the community education fund was in a good position last year, and they're budgeted to be, have a balanced budget this year as well. That's really the summary of the quarter two budget update, without running into too much detail. As I've said in prior quarters, if you do have questions on the details, feel free to reach out to me, because sometimes it's easier to ask about them.
Any questions now? All right. Open enrollment action items.
Thank you, I'm Chair, the, I believe that this is an action item that we need to take tonight, some reasons have been mentioned at the finance committee, and then again, here now, we want to make sure that we have our students in attendance and are, are they enrolled, and so there are three options that are before you. One is about accepting enough of your enrollment students to continue with the same number of students we have, that'd be 3248. The second one is to accept 40 additional students, that puts out 3288. And then the third one is to accept 55, so it puts out a total of 3,303 students. This is also predicated on having kindergarten class of 182 or 189. I brought up at the finance committee that the goal was to have 160 in kindergarten. If that's the case, that means we need to find another 20 students somewhere else in the, in the grade levels at some point. As I've said before, and everyone knows, this might be a little bit too much, our model is that we graduate, in this instance, 282, we bring in 182, that's a difference of 100 students just off the bat, that we lose in terms of just aging out or aging out. You heard from Bill about some of the, is it the morbidity study? What was the word?
Survivability, I think we're calling it.
About that, but there's an increase to that. And then, there also are other houses for sale in the district for movements, but one of the things about it is that there are students that are open enrolled and they move in, they don't count for our enrollment, all you do is move them out of the open enrollment column and put them into the resident problem. So I need some discussion and direction on kindergarten, and on the number of students to accept, and the target. I think they're all linked, because if, if one is down, and we're going less than 3248, I need to direct the business manager and the principals to promote additional reductions. If they're above that, then we change our scenarios as well.
So if we let in less than the 3288, which I think is the highest number, whatever the highest number is, if we don't go with the highest number, you'll set the budget on that, even though we have?
No, no, we'll set the budget on the number that you, that you gave us.
You'll set the number on the budget that we determine, but there will still be three more windows for open enrollment.
Right.
This is the concern I have, is that we're, the scenario seems to be, this is the target located tonight, I'm not considering open, we're not considering move-ins and move-outs and other scenarios, and so I would like to see, to sort of separate it out, what is the recommendation for budget target, what are we going to accept tonight for open enrollment? And that's how we've done it before, this is a new model, and if, if there's justification or reason for it, that makes sense, like some opening to that idea, but I'm just confused why we changed our approach to open enrollment this year.
First of all, I don't believe the approach has changed. We need to get 100 students one way or another, and the clear way to do that is through open enrollment and accepting students. And accepting them earlier and getting them to commit earlier makes a big difference as opposed to waiting on, where we lose students when we get into July, August, and so forth. We do not take students mid-year, and so we need to take them now for the fall, so they're ready to be part of the school district. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that while we want to believe that there's a commitment for the students, sometimes they are shopping, and they may have applied for open enrollment and monomeda, and also some other things, so there's no guarantee of them coming. But we believe that if they apply early and are accepted, then they can do that. This also gives us some time to determine where we are budgetarily, because if we're going to be off by 10 or 20 or 40 students, we're going to have to make reductions, measure it with that, and we don't want to be in that spot. We'd much rather be in a spot where we had 20-some students in the summer, and we have to hire another teacher, and that generates over $200,000 in revenue, the teacher cost is around 70 or so, and that 130 goes to budget reductions, or else goes to reducing class sizes elsewhere.
I hear what you're saying, we talk a lot about some of these issues. Do we know from data that this concept of shopping schools seems to me to be a secondary piece? It seems to me that when elementary kids apply to our district, they come, and we've had a lot of parents come, you know, very late and in the process, wanting to access their kids, so I'm not concerned about the acceptance of the elementary kids, except the timeline, but I'm concerned about the fact that it wasn't at, at movement. I agree that we want to give a lot of families potentially shopping districts, in a sense, and placements for secondary group, and so, that's why I'm struggling with it, is I think we have a lot going on, and to package it all in one decision doesn't give the board the flexibility to consider things that aren't addressed in the scenarios and other ideas.
We, well, the difference, you know, is that just, we also have lost families because we've accepted, say, or they have a second grade student that we've accepted, and that we denied their third grade or their fifth grade similarly, and so some of them have pulled out as well. So it's not, there may have been a time that you could say, next person out, and they would just come automatically, it's not like that.
I agree with that. I don't think we are doing it so differently than we've done in the past. I think we're doing the same thing we've done, we're moving it up earlier, which I think is an important thing to do. I don't think you can ever know these numbers perfectly. I think we spend a lot of time wishing that we did, and I think we spend a lot of time spinning our wheels about maybe this house, the one behind your house, the one behind my house, and who's going to move in. And yet, many of those homes are going to be purchased by people who would live out of the district, that already have their kids in here, and we don't know that. We don't know that. I think we should, I prefer that we operate on the information that we know, and if we get, we get more kids moving in, well, we'll deal with it. I mean, the teachers will do it if they want to. I just don't think it's, it has to be as painful as we seem to be making it, in my view.
I guess, to me, we're not operating on all the information we know, we're not operating on the 23 who, that, you know, that are talked about in the background information here, or the 19 overall, so we're not, these districts, these scenarios are not based upon all the information.
Well, and if I could add, when we're looking at the numbers, I think there was a mindset of the 3294 from the total in 2015-16 was the last year that there was a balanced budget, but I, I believe there were nine sections in the 325. So that, that's also very different than what we're talking about, we're talking about taking out a section in addition to increasing those numbers. So, I, if that's all fine, I just want us to all make sure we're remembering all these pieces as we're looking at these scenarios. It is comparable, but it's a very different comparison. There were nine sections, we're now down to eight, now we're talking about going down to seven, possibly, so the number of increase of students for class size will be significant compared to that time, that higher number that we're kind of operating around.
Comments? One of these scenarios has us admitting kindergarten students. We, we don't typically admit open enrollment kindergarten students before kindergarten roundup.
Right. We have not done that before.
All three have kindergarten.
All three have 25.
That's like, that's like.
So, so, because there was, that was not listed on our document, that is not as, as enlisted in the resolution, I just have concern about doing that.
So you'd like to remove the kindergarten from the possibility?
I just have a concern about doing it, because I, I, we haven't even been, how many can sign up for roundup?
We don't know.
Well, we don't know that.
So, how can we, how can you take one time?
But you, you know, that you can say, I want to have 25 kids, and 20 of our resident kids are only going to take five. You can take a number.
Well, that's open enrollment, so we would be.
We don't have names, we wouldn't be free to those kids until you had kindergarten.
That's, that's saying we're accepting 25 not coming to kindergarten, right? That's.
We're saying that we would accept the 25 open enrollment students now, they would be invited to kindergarten roundup, as part of the monomeda, as I'm preparing.
They would be secured in their enrollment.
Yes.
Despite if we have 1,000 kids still coming.
Right.
They wouldn't matter, they would be guaranteed a spot.
That is correct.
Right, and so that is my concern. In addition, the board made a decision to put kindergarten at 160, this change is the board decision without board input, back to 180.
We should discuss that again. I'm not convinced that we all agree that we want it back at 160.
But we didn't make the decision to go back to 180 either.
That's what we should discuss.
Right, exactly, and we have it, and these scenarios assume they have. So that's where I'm struggling with this component. I think we should pick a number tonight, I think we should look at the grade levels, and look at grade levels that make sense to accept students, you know, sort of one by one. I'm not comfortable accepting kindergarten right now, I'm very comfortable accepting my stuff either, because I think they're shopping. I think we should look at other grade levels and be able to have those discussions, but if we tonight blanket accept some of these, one of these proposals, it's, they're flawed to me, because of, you know, lack of data on move-ins, assumptions around kindergarten, and moving forward, we're hoping on something that's flawed to me.
We made something before, a bunch of kids moved in, and we got shot at kindergarten, and a lot of people come in, they're going to come in, and so, I don't know why we can't even consider, I think we should consider, bare minimum, accepting every sibling, every priority kid right now, because that's the right thing to do. As far as setting these numbers, I'm up in the air. But I think every kid that's a sibling and a student, a child of an employee should be accepted now if they're being asked to get in.
That's 56 students, 18 of which are in kindergarten.
And I, I just like to say something, remind that there is nine classrooms built for kindergarten roundup, and some comfortably nine sections of kindergarten, and that would be, you know, that 100 maybe point, went down to 160, would not be for sure we got the number of the section in the kindergarten classes, as you saw, and the scenarios here would be larger than they would be.
So I understand that, and we could go, we could go around and around, but let's say we had taken 180, and then we would have had 200 kindergartners. Did you? We would have 200.
Yes, then we would have just had to add another classroom teacher to do that.
But where, where would be?
At which classroom?
We wouldn't have to look at that, the configuration of our spaces, because there are spaces in that, and even principals and staff can talk about that, there are, if we need to, you add it, you add a classroom, you know, you would be able to, it's not ideal sometimes, if you have to have a specialist traveling, but it is a possibility to do that.
But still, obviously, we made a decision to go to 116 kindergarten, because we're looking at long-term K-12 enrollment picture, and so all of a sudden, we say, oh, 200 kindergartners because that's what moved in, that impacts the system for 12 years. And we ran into problems at OH, and we've got some pieces, previous boards worked very hard on in terms of brightsizing the high school, and programming, and things like that, and so, I want to be careful, we don't become too short-sighted in accept kids, accept kids, accept kids, without thinking about next year, the year after that, 10 years after that. They're with us for 13 years, and we've got to think about how it plays out over time. And I'm, I'm concerned that there are a number of issues that board still needs to discuss, the 116 are very good to meet, we have to have that discussion, the move-in philosophy, where we stand on that, and so, again, just, I'm going to say this one last time, I'm very comfortable setting a target number for the year, I'm very comfortable accepting some of the open enrollment kids tonight, you know, but I'm not comfortable with accepting a full package. If we need motion, I'd be glad to make a motion, if we think we're at that point in time.
What target are you looking at, current one?
Well, I think, to me, there's two motions, there's the target, and then there's the open enrollment piece, you know. I would first ask our superintendent what his recommendation for a target is, based on understanding the whole, the whole picture of the 13-year time span, because I think that's important, because you have a year to guide it.
Window two, option two, if we had 3288, we would be accepting all of the children employees and their siblings, and that's 18 kindergarten students, and then we would match up the other ones to get us to that total of 3280. The wild would go up by 16 students, OH JN would drop 14, middle school would be up 21, high school would be up 17, and a total of 40 additional students. Our budget reduction could go from 1.6 million to all. Our budget reduction could go up from one point six million to all.
Or just a matter of discussion on the enrollment case, what is the budget number, the target number? Do you think the target number thirty-two eighty-eight, no matter how we get there, is an ideal number for the, the thing about revenue and expenses and budget?
That's, to me, is a slightly different question than I would recommend that we go with thirty-three oh three, which would mean that our budget reductions would drop to one point one million as opposed to one point six. I feel that some board members might think that's, as they say, a bridge too far, we'd be accepting a lot more open enrollment students. There's been a lot of concern and issue about that. And so I, I said the window two, option two first because that's as far as I thought the board would go. I didn't think the board would go to option three.
I also want to remind us that we are considering levy and that in our last levy work, open enrollment was a huge issue with our voters. And that could make or break our levy.
Then we add that to the survey about the class size connected to the dollars. And, you know, that, that's kind of a big deal. If they want smaller class sizes, they're going to have to understand they're going to have to pay more, that we have to pay for it and we can't just, otherwise we're going to, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place right now. We are, we are not really at a spot where we can say, this is what we want to do and make it work. We got to deal with what we, what we, what we're at right now. I'd like to have one hundred and sixty kids that we talked about. We had one hundred and forty before because we just didn't get the, the move-ins that we thought, you know. So you got that, there is that whole gap of you don't know, you don't know. But what we do know is there's a list that's ready to come and I think we should take in. But I also think the public, that the citizens need to know, in order for us to maintain a budget, we got to bring in more kids or you got to help us out and put some more skin in the game and help us if you care about education.
With more skin in the game.
The levy. We're going to get people, not, people are going to get mad at us either way, whatever we do. I'm, I'm all for the thirty-three oh three number myself. I say let's just do that and then get, try to get squared away and kind of reset the whole budget moving forward for the next ten years, something like that.
And square up and enlarge your class size.
I'm not for you with larger classes when you reduce the, the sections.
So thirty-three or thirty-three? Thirty-three oh three actually makes most of the class sizes.
Much larger.
Much larger. Actually, it actually makes them larger. Thirty-three oh three actually makes them larger.
Option two makes them smaller than option one?
Yes.
Because larger class sizes...
Too small, too small. The more kids, smaller.
Because what you can do is you can average out, you may get, you know, eight kids in a certain class, you can then add a teacher so that you have, like you were saying, eight kids across another section. It's not smaller where you cut a section.
At this point in time, I'd like to make a motion...
All the sections that have to be cut are, yes, definitely larger. But that's because we have to do, and we don't have, and we don't have the students wanting to open enrollment in that particular grade layer. But if we did, you know, say you had ten more students that applied for a certain grade level, that would help them to reduce that, that class size.
It seems to make every, every, every class smaller except second grade because for some reason we're using one section.
Well, because we have students to add to it, to them, you know. Right. So if we happen to get more students that would either move in or apply to open enrollment, then you can add a classroom teacher at that point. And then you take this as a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we set our budget target, so we can build a budget at thirty-two eighty-eight.
An enrollment target?
An enrollment target at thirty-two eighty-eight, knowing that in the future, as we discuss these items more, we could accept more than that and still have a very common tax on our budget.
Any further discussion?
May I get clarification? I believe I was going to say that this is a minimum, you didn't say minimum, you said that it could be revisited, but it could be revisited. Would your advice?
Yes.
Okay.
We could accept more than after open enrollment and things like that. We could want to have, as the department may have made, that is the target.
Build the budget.
Build the budget on that number and knowing our attrition rate, we, it should, we would probably accept more than that, but we need a number tonight to go and continue this process out.
Is there additional discussion?
Yes. Does thirty-two eighty-eight mark allow those siblings to come in now?
That's not, that's not the motion on the table. Motion on the table is only the number, we're not talking about who that would be.
We're talking classes, we're talking a number.
We're talking, I'm sorry, period. That's the only motion I need.
So the action item is open enrollment window one. So I guess I need clarification.
You can make an action or motion at any time. You can make a motion at any time in the meeting. So I've made a motion, it's contested, it's being discussed.
So right now the motion on the floor is to use as a target enrollment thirty-two eighty-eight, we'll figure out how we get to it. And there's a second, is there any additional discussion?
Yeah, I can't, if, I, I, I want an offering deal to get those other kids in before I agree.
We're not talking about how we're getting the kids in, we're just giving them a number to build a budget.
Okay, all right.
It's just the number right now, it's not about how we fill those class slots. Additional discussion?
I think I can deal with that.
All right, hearing that, I'll just clear the motion to accept thirty-two eighty-eight as the enrollment target, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Go to work, Bill.
Thank you.
So do we actually have to do anything else that you want tonight about...
Well, I would recommend that we do some work on open enrollment. It sounds as if it's not, the first part of the option of accepting the targeted enrollment number thirty-two eighty-eight, I'm linking the open enrollment and it sounds like there's not a total agreement on the board. One suggestion was just to go grade by grade, that would be part weight to get us there. Also, we'll know probably by February, middle of February, who's saying yes and who's saying no. So we'll be able to put tighter numbers then.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all second year applicants, grade six through twelve that have, that are in column D on option two. Sorry. No, I only accept all, all second years. Well, there's, there's only three that are left applicants, others, I made the motion to accept all applications in secondary school.
True.
Column C, grade six through twelve.
Head second. Additional discussion?
Just a second, what is this one? Number two?
You're not saying where to go right now, are you?
Um, no. What are we looking at? What are you looking at? Scenario two. So if you're using scenario two.
Lucy pointed out the fact that historically we've not accepted seniors, part of the motion does include accepting seniors. But it is only one and in addition, this is only a few more things we had suggested.
Any additional discussion?
Motion on the floor is right now to accept all of the open enrolled applicants in our secondary schools, grade six through twelve, accept them soon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're not working.
Right.
All right, is that giving what you need to start working?
That helps us quite a lot in terms of that. We're looking to get an additional one hundred and forty students. This is eighty-eight, so we're still sixty or fifty-two short.
I thought about this a little bit. I'd like to make the motion to accept, again, window two, option two, column D, the twelve first graders and the ten second graders recommended there.
Twelve, well, the first grade, ten second grade. What you're thinking about that versus third grade, fourth grade?
Well, I'm breaking it up just because I'm looking at building size and I'm looking at the building enrollment under option number three at the bottom of that same page. So we're not increasing the building size, we're not decreasing the building size, we're, we are decreasing the building size, but by not taking those twenty-five kindergartners. So I go because those guys, we don't know, it's keeping us pretty neutral in that building until we know what's happening in kindergarten, is my recommendation.
Let's go to second.
No.
Go to second, yes.
Stacy, a second. The motion on the floor is to accept the open enrolled kids in column D in first and second grade, so we're setting one in four.
I'd like to know if your thoughts are kindergarten.
That's the motion on the floor.
This discussion, can I ask your thoughts?
You can, but I'm not going to discuss that, I chose the motion on the floor. I think we need to clear this motion and so if you want to, if you want to change the motion and amend the motion, please go ahead, but the motion I made is, is around that.
I'd like to, can I offer an amended motion?
Sure.
I'd like to offer an amended motion adding the siblings of, the eighteen siblings in kindergarten and employees slash siblings, that they be accepted too.
So a second to the amendment?
Okay, so your motion is to, your amendment is to accept eighteen priority one in kindergarten?
Yes.
In addition to the twelve first graders and the ten second graders?
Yes.
Is there a second to the amendment? Hearing that, you can bring that up as a separate motion.
Oh, yeah, I will.
So right now the motion on the floor is to accept the twelve first graders, ten second graders, and column D on this list does open enrollment application. Can we through the discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us, any?
So was that five or six of us?
I said yes.
Oh, you said yes.
I said aye. Can I ask why we want to hold off on siblings and employees? I would like to hear from anybody why we should hold off on that because that means these kids...
We don't know how many are coming from industry.
Well, why, why would we not? I understand that, but they're siblings and they're priority one.
We got a report. How many people are coming? Get here and run them.
March 2nd, March 4th?
Certainly by March.
I don't know, every year I say this, we have the people that want to come in, but we're not letting them in. This is how we came up short a couple of years ago with kindergarten, the same way.
I'd like to make the motion that for grades three, four and five, we accept applicants in column one, the employees, building children at this point in time. One second grader, nine fourth graders and four fifth graders.
One second.
Is there additional discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
More little way of this, Mark.
Yeah, we are. So we've accepted one hundred and twenty-four students at this point. We, the target is one hundred and forty. Kindergarten is still not, not spoken for and there still are other options out there. This does give us good direction to start with. And we'll see where these people, these students and families are in terms of whether they're accepting.
But they don't really come, right? Say it's wrong. I just want to remember that they can say in January that they're going to come.
And I come.
And come, I come.
Great, but we feel, we believe that if I happen to get part of the district doing it.
Exactly, and I just want to go with that, you know, the elementary, I really think first kindergarten is a good time because I think high school, that's a deep challenge and there are all the options. So I'm hoping for that those students will, you know, deny, so I want to keep those grades open for the option of additional students there as well.
So if you're going to adjust to, I mean, when is all our next, will we be making a decision right after kindergarten?
Yes. Mark, is there a next time?
Is there a question over the board?
There's a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please.